If we could call the meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Here.
Green?
Here.
Lafore. Ms. Stravich. Ricks. Warren?
Here.
Yarck?
Here.
Okay, at this time if we could have a motion to appoint a presiding officer being that the mayor and Mayor Proton are out of town.
I make a motion to appoint Councilor Jeff Yarck to serve as the presiding officer at the March 7th, 2016 city council meeting.
Support? All those in favor say yes.
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 Oppose? No? Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we also would like to entertain some motions to excuse our missing members. Would you like to do that?
Make the motion.
It would be individual. Or you would like to make a motion that covers all three?
All three.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of minutes for the meeting of February 15th, 2015. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Support.
Made and supported. Any changes? Amendments? Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? It passes. Audience comments on any non-agenda items. If anyone would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda, if you'll please to come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes. Is there anyone? Okay. Adopted agenda. Mr. City Manager, any additions or changes?
No changes.
Counsel, any changes?
No.
Okay. This goes a lot faster without the other three here. It's amazing what we can get done if it's only half of us. I'm sure they're going to all watch and make a comment about that. Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Support.
Made and seconded. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? That motion passes. We need a motion for the consent agenda.
I make a motion to support the consent agenda.
Support.
Okay. There's no discussion on consent agenda. Ready to vote? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? That also passes. All right, we have no public hearing tonight. Items for agenda number one, consideration of the confirmation of the fire chief. Mr. City Manager?
Counsel is scheduled to consider confirming the appointment of Tom Garant as fire chief for the city of Richmond. According to the city charter, the city council confirms the appointment of the fire chief who is selected by the fire department membership so long as it remains a volunteer department.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to confirm the appointment of Tommy Garant as fire chief for the city of Richmond in accordance with section 7.13 of the city of Richmond charter for one-year term commencing March 1st, 2016 and expiring on March 1st, 2017.
Support.
Made and supported. Okay. Any discussion?
Thank you so much for your service. I'm very excited to look forward to this. I had the privilege of serving with you on the committee, and I can't wait to see what's in store.
Future chief, before you actually, you want to come up to the podium and... So we can get you in the cameras, so everyone can see the new chief?
Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you very much to city council, everybody here as well, and my family, and of course the family of the fire department. I look very much, look forward to working with everybody, look forward to all the new challenges, most of which I'm pretty darn familiar with, so again, thank you very much. Any questions for me?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. In addition, part of that vote, Chief Two would be Curtis Spence, Chief Three is Rob Reindell, Captain One be Gary Protassi, Lieutenant One Sean Kramer, Lieutenant Two Jeff Yelnitz, and the Secretary of Treasury is Jake Cook. And I want to thank all of them. As a firefighter myself and understanding what goes into administering a fire department, there's a lot to it, as you know, as you've come up through the ranks. We appreciate everything you've done, and kudos, as Counselor Green has also said, we've worked together on the fire equipment, and we still have more work to do to help equip the department in the hopes and replace their equipment, and we hope to continue to work with you very positively.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. If there's no, any more discussion from the table? Okay. Seeing not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion carries. Good luck. Okay. Item number two, consideration of approving request to sell Tootsie Rolls from the Richmond Knights of Columbus. Mr. City Manager?
Counsel is scheduled to consider a request received from the Richmond Knights of Columbus to conduct their annual Tootsie Roll sale on Friday, March 18th, and Saturday, March 19th. The required documentation under our solicitation ordinance for nonprofit soliciting in the intersections has been filed with the office of the city clerk, and the administration just recommends that they not be allowed to be in the Division Road and Main Street intersection from 2:30 to 3:30 on Friday due to school traffic.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the requests received from the Richmond Knights of Columbus to conduct their Tootsie Roll sale at the intersections of Main Division and County Line Road, St. Clair Highway, City Side, on Friday, March 18th and Saturday, March 19th, from dawn to dusk. That the Knights of Columbus agree not to be in the Main Division intersection on Friday, March 27th, from 2:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. Further, the Knights of Columbus agree that the volunteers will wear reflective vests and utilize orange traffic cones, and further, that the Knights of Columbus agree to sign a liability waiver.
Support.
Okay. It's made and supported. Discussion? Appreciate everything's in line and ready to go? Anything from the audience? Okay. Back to the table? Nothing? Okay. Call for the vote. We're very happy at this end of the table. You guys are smiling. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Item number three, consideration of bid award Pound Road Reconstruction Project.
City council is scheduled to consider awarding the Pound Road Reconstruction Project bid for construction to begin on Pound Road in the spring of 2016. The scope of work is to replace the existing water main, construct new storm sewer, enclose the ditches, and construct a 31-foot wide roadway in that area. There will also be sidewalks run through the driveway approaches in anticipation of sidewalks at a future date. That is not part of this project. Jim and I are working on scheduling the public information meeting. It's tentatively scheduled for the end of this month on the 31st, but we're framing up that date this week, and we'll be sending out notices to all of the residents along Pound Road. Jim is here to answer any technical questions on the project. The low bid is from Telto Contracting. They have done work for us in the past. I know Tetra Tech, the city engineering firm, did do their due diligence in checking the references, things like that, but as I said, they've done work for us in the past and have worked well with our residents on projects such as this. So our recommendation is for approval, or awarding the project to Telto.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to award the Pound Road Reconstruction Project to Telto Contracting in the amount of $1,367,364.79, with the expenses charged, the appropriate line item within the local streets and water funds.
Support. Before discussion, just wanted, again, I have no financial interest in this motion, except I am a Pound Road resident, so if anyone feels I need to abstain from it, I'm not going to be offended.
No.
Okay. All right. Any discussion from the table?
Just that it was nice to get a letter from Mr. Kingsley confirming it too, so that it not only was low bid, he also has full confidence in the company as well. And the 79 cents, like seriously? I'm sorry.
We're getting hold of the 79 cents.
79 cents.
Not getting paid if it turns out to be 80. Any comments from the audience?
Yeah, where will that be at? The Pound Road within the city limits, from Main Street to essentially the end of the pavement.
Okay. All right. Back to the table? Okay. I'd like to say it has been long overdue. We've been far familiar with the Pound Road project. The fact is that it had to be put off many years because good governance meant that we were going to do the water main at the same time. We had to get all this money together. We don't like to borrow money for streets. We like to pay basically cash so we get our best value for the tax dollar, which meant that a road that had needed to be done for many years needed to be just pushed back until we had all the money together so it would be, this is what we want to do, have a very efficient project. And to our DPS director, thank you for, you know, bringing, finishing this up. It's going to be a busy summer on Pound Road. It will, yeah. All right. We'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay. Motion passes. Item four, bid award for 2016 ground maintenance contract, 2016-GM-1. Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider awarding the 2016 ground maintenance contract. The project was advertised on Mitten, and an advertisement was also placed in The Voice. Over the years, we've added a few areas to the scope of this project. Normally, it started out with the police posts and the wastewater treatment plant. Then a couple of years back, we evaluated kind of all of our properties within the city and shifted those that made the most financial sense over to the grounds maintenance contract. So there are some properties throughout town that the city owns that are under this contract. DNE is the low bidder. They've been the low bidder in the past, although they weren't last year, and I think the year before they were. So again, we're familiar with this contractor, and are recommending awarding the bid to DNE Landscaping.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to award the 2016 grounds maintenance contract, 2016-GM-1, to DNE Landscaping with the expenses charged, the appropriate line items of the general fund, major street fund, local street fund, Tifa fund, sanitary sewer fund, and water fund in the fiscal year 1516 and fiscal year 1617 budgets with an estimated amount of $14,975.22.
Support?
Made and supported. Discussion?
I just want to thank all the other people for applying for the bid, that there are local companies, and we appreciate and hope they continue to apply for bids when we have them out, but DNE was the lowest one, so that just makes sense to go with them.
Anyone else? To the audience, any comments? Okay. Back to the table. It's that, I do appreciate that over the years, council and staff have worked together to kind of continue to work on what's the most efficient way to provide service and deal with this, and this has been what made sense to balance on our workload. So... All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay? Item number five, consideration approving resolution 2016-3, an intergovernmental agreement to assist Richmond Township with code enforcement. Mr. City Manager?
Counsel is scheduled to consider approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Richmond and Richmond Township to have the city of Richmond Police Department assist the township code enforcement officer with her duties when she is in the field enforcing their codes. In January 2005, the city council and the township entered into a one-year agreement that included a $1,000 annual administration fee, a per-hour rate that is charged in four-hour increments, as well as mileage reimbursement. As we've discussed in the past, we're not doing the code enforcement, the code enforcement officer is. We're out there to assist that code enforcement officer and go to the houses that she's going out to in the middle of the township where no one's around. So it's kind of a safety factor for them in requesting this. In the past, they have utilized the sheriff department on similar contracts, but last year switched and asked the city of Richmond to provide that contract. Chief Teske is here tonight if you have any questions. The first year of the contract, by administration's view, the police department's view, and the township's view went very well. Now that we have that one year under our belt, we were comfortable with the financial setup within the contract, and are recommending a three-year contract just so that we're not back at the table every year. And there is an out clause should either party be dissatisfied sometime during that three years.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2016-3, resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Richmond and Richmond Township to have the city of Richmond Police Department assist the township code enforcement officer.
Support. Made and supported. Any comments and questions?
I would just like to say that this, just to remind our residents that this doesn't take away from current patrol or anything. This is an additional officer who will be able to get extra hours for this, and it is not paid for at all by the city of Richmond residents. The township completely covers the expenses. I know I get questions on this when they see them out in the township, and I assure you that this is not costing you any money, and it is actually a positive thing for the department because they get more exposure and the officers get more hours.
Any more? And I had a question for the chief.
Yes, sir.
While they're on, have we had any situation where they were out in the township and something came up and we needed to call them back into the city? Or would they be available then if there was something?
Absolutely. When, if there's something like a 911 emergency, that goes without saying that, you know, all hands on deck kind of a thing. So it's not that kind of an intense nature where we couldn't be pulled away from that to complete whatever we needed to do here for the city, having those extra resources that much closer.
But that officer is there in addition to what would already be there?
It doesn't take away from the patrol shift that's already here, but if that officer needs backup or something, obviously that's the first place we would pull, because obviously it's the closest car for us, so...
Any other comments? Go to the audience? Back to the table? Wonderful. And I think that's a very important point to bring, that it's at no cost to the city, just an additional, and at the same time, we're actually getting more protection because there's another officer that's available to come back into the city to support the operation.
Correct. And in between times, if he's, you know, he launches from here and he returns here, so I mean, there's a car that's close by at all times during that span of any, you know, it's sometimes not quite the four hours, but it's, that covers that time, and that officer's available for whoever needs him if it happens to be an emergency, so it's a win-win. I mean, I get nothing but positive feedback from even the residents that are out there seeing us pull around out there, so that's another story, so...
Wonderful. And the same thing, I think it's important to remember that this is really showing a much better relationship, the city and the township working together. This is where we need to be in shared services, working together. How can we lean on each other for the betterment of all the taxpayers? That we get better services and not necessarily costing us more. All right. A call for the vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion passes. Item number six, consideration of lot split request, Sun Richmond Industrial. Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider lot split requests to the 32-acre parcel at the end of Skinner Drive that is zoned I-1 Industrial. The property is owned by Sun Richmond Industrial LLC, whose parent company, Sun Communities, owns the manufactured housing community, Richmond Place, that is adjacent to the southwest corner of the 32 acres. Back in 2008, the cities Tifa and the city of Richmond entered into an agreement with Sun Communities to extend city services, including the roadway, storm, sanitary, and water into that 32 acres in the hopes of developing that parcel for industrial uses. After that, unfortunately, we had the downturn in the economy, and although we had started down this path with putting the road in and the infrastructure, we had kind of somehow the actual doing the lot splits had slipped through the cracks, and so we're kind of playing catch-up now and taking care of all of those things. What you have before you is essentially two requests. The first being a lot split request to split off the roadway that is the extension of Skinner Drive and the parcel that we often refer to as kind of the DPW parcel that's adjacent to our wellhouse. So the motion number one you have corresponds to the first map in your packet, which is splitting off the green highlighted area, which is the roadway, and the orange highlighted area that is adjacent to the city's well property. And then the second motion that you have in your packet tonight is to actually split off lot number one, which on the second map is shown highlighted in orange, and that's a four-acre parcel at the northwest corner of the 32 acres. We've had the city planner, myself, the city assessor, go over the documents along with Diane Huber, who is here tonight, representing the property owner, and along with some other interested parties on lot number one. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the lot split request, number one, from Richmond Sun Industrial to split the road right-of-way for the extension of Skinner Drive, legal description number five, and the future DPW property, legal description number seven, from the parent parcel 50-7-3-36-356-7 of the original 32-acre parcel, parcel A, legal description, resulting in a new parent parcel, legal description eight.
Support.
Made and supported. Discussion?
Sorry for the motion.
And the legal descriptions can be found in...
In your packet.
In the packet. That's what I thought.
What we did with the motion is had it all included in there so that then when the minutes go down to the county, everything is together along with the legal descriptions.
I don't know, should Counselor Green actually read the whole legal description?
No.
Anyone else? Okay. The audience participation? Anyone?
This is the road.
All right, back to the table. Any last? Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay? Motion carries. Do we have another motion that we'll entertain?
I'll make a motion to approve the lot split request, number two, from Richmond Sun Industrial to split lot one, legal description number nine, from the parent parcel, legal description eight, resulting in a new parent parcel, legal description 10.
Support.
Made and supported. Discussion?
I'm very excited about this. I feel like I've waited my whole life. So, I, are you guys?
Yeah, we're...
Well, thank you. This has been, I've called it the promised land because I've been waiting for business, for my children to then be employed, for just excitement to happen in that land. I've been a part of whatever this is since I've been a resident, and I'm very excited that you're coming. We welcome you. There's lots of, talked to John, he's a great resource, and Troy are great resources too, just in any questions you have, because they're like geniuses of just a bunch of random stuff. So thank you for coming. We're excited.
And we have met with them already, and so, and will continue to meet with them to work, take them through the process.
Fantastic.
So it's worthwhile going to the audience. Did anyone want to speak on this, or you want to talk about it at all?
Introduce your business, or what you're putting there?
Name of our business is Masters Machine. We do CNC machines. At this point, we're just renting a facility, so we're looking to expand and build somewhere between six and 10,000 square feet structure to operate it.
Oh, fantastic. Incredible. It's incredible.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to the table? Yes, it's a, it's a great thing. Welcome to the city. Looking forward to having that land split up and developed, as Counselor Green said, some job opportunities in the area, and diversify what we have here. So, welcome. All right. Call for the vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion passes. Okay. That completes our items for consideration. City manager's comments?
I'd just like to congratulate the six members of the Richmond Volunteer Fire Department who participated in the Fight for Air event by climbing all the steps down at the Rensen, I think, last weekend or the weekend before. I think there were six of them that completed that. Also, the change notices did go out last week, and border review dates are on the city calendar. If you don't see them there, they're also, will be on the website, and there's a table here in the lobby of the police and city hall building where they can come and look up information if they want to go to the border review.
Go to council comments. Really quiet to my left. Skip all of them. Counsel Warren?
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate the high school cheer team, high school wrestling team, did well in the states, and also the basketball team that's playing tonight.
Awesome. Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight?
Thank you.
Counselor Green?
I have nothing tonight either.
Okay. Thank you for letting me be your host tonight. Mayor Ricks will be back for our regularly scheduled meeting, so... I will go to the calendar. While I'm doing the calendar, you guys can think of who's going to jump on the adjournment thing. People love making that motion.
I forgot that.
Okay. Starting tomorrow, it's going to be the presidential primary election. Encourage people to get out. Probably won't be aired before it comes out, but encourage people to vote. 7:00 p.m. is the cable commission meeting.
I apologize, that's been delayed one week.
Oh, that's been, okay.
So it'll be one week following.
So that will be March 15th at 7:00 o'clock?
Correct.
Okay. We have a PZA meeting at 7:00 o'clock with the planning commission to follow. There is something on the agenda for the PZA, so... Next, the following week, we have a 7:00 p.m. library board meeting on March 14th. EDC, 7:00 on March 17th. We have some notices here. March 19th will be at 10:30 a.m. is the Easter egg scramble. My understanding is you better be there right at 10:30, otherwise you will not be getting an egg, despite thousands of Easter eggs it sells, and apparently they go fast.
They do.
We have age groups three to four, five to six, and seven to 10. Make sure you bring a bag or basket. Okay? So good luck with that. Our next scheduled council meeting is March 21st. Also that week, March 23rd, 7:00 will be the Tifa meeting, and the, just to let everyone know, March 25th, city hall, and the community center will be closed on March, they said March 25th, and the library is closed that weekend also. We also have one other notice here that we'd like to share. Adult coloring night at the Lois Wagner Memorial Library. Coloring isn't just for kids anymore. So it's, it'll be at the library from 5:30 to 7:00. I guess we're supplying the coloring pages and pencils. It's Bring Your Own Book, or BYOB to be cute apparently. March 23rd, April 20th, and May 18th, so... I didn't write, I don't write this material. All right. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. Support.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No one ever opposes? Everyone, have a good night.
[music]